Okay, I'm going to call the meeting of the Morgantown Planning Commission to order. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Morgantown Planning Commission. Please turn off all cell phones and other devices that may disrupt these proceedings. That reminds me to do that. Planning Commission conducts business in the following order. There will be a general public comment portion when anyone who wishes to address the Planning Commission may do so, but only on matters that are not on the agenda. There will be a five-minute time limit for speakers. All recognized speakers must approach the podium, state their name and address for the record, and speak clearly into the microphone. Speakers are notified that irrelevant comments or comments of a personal nature or personal attacks may result in the speaker forfeiting their opportunity to participate in the general public comment portion. Next, we review, amend, and approve the minutes of the previous meetings. We consider any unfinished business from previous meetings. We then move on to new business items. First, we introduce the item and the Planning Division representative presents the staff report. Next, we ask the petitioner to make a presentation. Planning Commissioners may ask the petitioner questions at that time. I will then open a public hearing to hear testimony in support of or in opposition to the request. Rules regarding the public testimony are as follows. Anyone wishing to testify during the public hearing may do so once recognized. Each recognized speaker must approach the podium, state their name and address for the record, and speak clearly into the microphone. All comments must be addressed to the commission. Speakers are notified that irrelevant comments or comments of a personal nature or personal attacks may result in the speaker forfeiting their opportunity to participate in the public hearing. All speakers will be limited to five minutes. If members of the commission have questions for the speaker, that time will not be counted toward the speaker's five minutes. If there are a large number of speakers, including many who are parts of groups or organizations, I may, to avoid repetitive comments, I'd like to ask for a representative to speak on behalf of the group or organization. I may like to recognize the applicant or agent at the end of the public hearing to provide rebuttal or additional comments, which will be limited to five minutes. If members of the commission have any questions to the applicant or agent, that time will not be counted toward the applicant or agent's five minutes. After all testimony is heard, I will declare the public hearing closed and no further public comments will be permitted. At that time, no one in the audience may speak again unless the Planning Commissioner asks a question. If someone has asked a question, they must come to the microphone and identify themselves once again before answering. Next, the Planning Commission will discuss and take action on the application. Once the vote is final, members of the audience who were present for that particular case may leave if they wish. In order not to disrupt the meeting, people who choose to leave must leave the room before carrying on a quiet discussion. Uncivil, unruly, and/or disruptive behavior at any time during the meeting is prohibited and will result in removal from the public meeting. Thank you for your consideration and respect for these proceedings and the opinions of all meeting participants. So the first matter on the agenda is general public comment. Does anyone have a comment or a matter that's not on the agenda? Okay, next we'll move to the June 14th minutes. Sorry, July 14th minutes.
Move for approvals presented.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor. It's unanimous for those that were present. Next item is unfinished business. MJS 22-01, R&amp;R Holdings III LLC, 1345 Van Nuys Road.
All right, thank you, everybody. Again, my name is Peter Giger. I'm the Director for the City of Morgantown. I'd like to call your attention, Commission. You have several items in front of you. You have a copy of the slideshow presentation. You also have a green folder in front of you, and that's with additional, that has additional comments that were provided regarding this particular case that were also emailed to you today and yesterday. So just to kind of provide a recap from our last meeting on July 14th, the applicant is here proposing to create a new subdivision here at La Dolce Vita, and it encompasses three lots, approximately 3.47 acres. It is located, as you see on the screen, in the area highlighted in blue in an R1 district. This is a view of the existing conditions as per Google. Since our last meeting in July, staff has met with area residents, and I'd like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Donaldson for hosting a meeting at their home there at 13 Heritage Place. I'd also like to thank the applicant who was attendance, Devin Shrewsbury, as well as representatives from MUB, Ken Hacker is here today and are this evening, and Ken Willis for attending that meeting. As you also, as I already mentioned, you also reviewed or received additional communications from several residents and subsequent materials from Mr. John James, who is on the line and who is representing or has done some extra work for the residents here in the area, looking at the report. You can hear, again, this is the proposed subdivision. The applicant proposes to create 11 lots, of which 10 will be buildable. Lot number 11, that runs along and adjacent to Van Boris, is supposed to be a buffer for the project that West Virginia Division of Highways is moving forward with, which is to expand the right-of-way, add a sidewalk, and improve the roadway through that particular area. I did reach out to DOH, and they have reviewed the plans and had no issues. So with regarding staff's recommendation or conditions in the recommendation regarding DOH, they have given us approval. They don't have any concerns with it. Looking on, this map shows the stormwater utility easement that was discussed last time, and I'll leave it on the screen if it becomes for reference tonight, and it's highlighted in blue here. And you also received in your packet and email the maintenance agreement that's been signed by the developer as well as MUB. This slide shows the deficiencies in the plan that were, that needed to be addressed, whether it's at the final plat or at the preliminary plat level, and those deficiencies are listed in more detail in your packet. Wanted to show this slide just because I know there were some questions about the stormwater facility. On the left-hand side, that's an enlarged image of the stormwater retention pond that will be in place, and the applicant can probably explain that a little more in detail if you have questions about how that operates. And then in speaking with MUB at the meeting, a similar facility that's already in the community is on Eastern Avenue, South French Quarter Drive. And so that's just an example of something similar, not exact, but something similar to what the applicant is proposing. And that's all I have.
Applicant's here, right? Or the agent? You're welcome to add whatever you want. I know we asked for Ken Hacker to be here, too, and I think we'll ask him some questions. If you want, go ahead.
Yes, hello. I'm Mike Nester, Principal Engineer at Ascend Consulting Engineering, and also Devin Shrewsbury is here as well to represent the project. I don't have, I'd be happy to answer any questions directed to the additional report or anything that you guys had questions about previously. I don't have any opening comments ever.
Go ahead. You have questions?
Yeah, can you come back to the microphone? Yes, sir. Have you reviewed the value engineering through their way of a series of letters, one August 10 and the second August 11?
Yes, I have.
One of the things that the writer talks about is underestimated impervious surface. Now, obviously, obviously, impervious surface is key when, in stormwater.
Absolutely.
So could you talk about whether you felt, you feel the amount of impervious surface is properly estimated in your calculation?
I 100% believe it is. Initial run and typical for, for a stormwater drainage evaluation for a project like this is we look at a couple of things. We'll look at the acreage of the lots in general that you're doing for that subdivision. Here, we've got 10 lots and, you know, three and a half acres. So we're better than a third of an acre per lot as a whole for the, for the development, right? So the TR-55 methodology gives you really good tables to outline what that is and what you're doing. So we used a conservative approach at a quarter-acre lots for that, and then also worked backwards to look at the precise impervious, just as a back check to make sure. And our volumes are certainly less than what is stated in this report, and I believe that, and I have to turn to Ken, but I believe our peak volumes on our study, they, MUB provided an independent study, and we were, what, hundreds off in terms of the peak discharge?
Well, that goes to my second question. You talk about your interface with MUB in the, in the planning and design process. How did you work with MUB? And tell me about that.
Oh, we worked from the onset of design in this project. We went through several iterations for stormwater management, considering several things for this site, including the potential to do an underground facility, which I really didn't want to do because I thought it's more problematic. It's more difficult to maintain for a commercial use when you're parking over it. Okay, you know, sometimes that's a necessity, but for something like this, it's easier to maintain if it's, if it's an open area. So we talked about that. We've actually went a little bit above and beyond on this. MUB's requirements for 210 and up to 50-year reduction from, from pre to post is already more than I see in any other jurisdiction. I've written MS4 programs and worked in stormwater management all over the state and, as well as other states, and I've, I've never seen anything more than, than 50 years. Typically, it's 210 and sometimes a 25-year storm at best. This facility actually provides a volume for, in the event of a 100-year storm, it can withstand that and has freeboard above the embankments at 100-year. So it's, we've went a bit above and beyond for that. And then also, one thing that was added in after the communication with MUB and concern about, you know, just the proximity to the neighborhood beside it was the addition of a liner and an under-drain system, so that in the ultimate permanent stormwater condition, we can avoid an issue of water seepage going to the, to the other neighbors now.
So what do you say to the neighbors? I mean, they're here tonight as far as their concerns about flooding.
I understand there's been a long history here, obviously. This project would be, you know, coming in and not knowing any of that, cut and dry, there's two areas that the water wants to go. It wants to go to the opposite corner from where we're gathering it, and it wants to go to where there's an existing inlet, which is just towards the central part of the site, just off where our basin is, right? We can make this project a lot easier by allowing it to go where it wants to go, limiting earthwork and saving money on the developer's end. Because of those concerns and that history and knowing that there's, there's been water and damage in that system, we are actually regrading this site to get everything away from those areas, to bring it back to Southview where we can enter into MUB's system. So what I would say as a whole is I understand there's been concerns. I understand there's been a past history. This project, when it's developed and built out, will improve that condition. We're removing that drainage that's going in those locations now. We're taking it somewhere where we can deal with it, treat it, hold it, and then dissipate it into the existing system. I know there was concerns in that report about the, the capacity of the existing system to take it.
We'll ask Mr. Hacker about that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was getting ready to ask, is if you, if you've looked at the interface with Southview, but I guess Mr. Hacker's more likely to answer that question.
And that's fine, and if I can, just one thing, Tim, I, the, this is all one drainage area, right? It's all ultimately going to the same place. What we're doing is we're doing a short diversion to get it away from their backyards. Ultimately, it's going to converge at the same place as it does now. We're just eliminating that flow through the, the rear yards of these, you know, adjacent properties, and we're getting it around the other direction.
Quick question about the, when you talked about the being able to withstand a 100-year storm, are you talking about the pond or are you talking about the ditching also that directs everything toward the pond?
Mainly the pond, mainly the pond. I can't, I can't speak directly on the ditching.
Well, wouldn't you think that if the ditching is, you know, only going to handle a 10-year storm, then it's just never going to get to the pond, right?
No, good point. But, but the ditching can easily, you know, we can, we can run that and increase the bottom width of the ditch if we need to, to get that to follow that.
But I would think that would be part of the design.
Well, you realize that a 100-year storm is over a duration, right? That doesn't drop all at once in buckets, and then your ditch has to handle that, right? So the, it's really an exponential increase to the pond from where the ditch, the conveyance is, so.
And I understand that. I guess what I'm saying is, you know, if the ditch doesn't have the capacity to get the water to the pond, then it's kind of a...
The ditch won't have the capacity to get the water to the pond.
What's the ditch designed at, or is it?
Devin, do you recall what we ran those numbers at? I believe it's running to 50, but I believe it's running to 50 because that's what MUB's requirement is, right? And then as a back check, just for pond capacity, we looked at the volumes and said, okay, we can encapsulate 100-year. But all of the conveyances are designed with their volume requirements, which are 210, 50-year storm.
Okay.
And velocity, there's velocity requirements, too, right?
There is, there is. And that, what that really drives is, you know, things like erosion control matting, check dams, trying to hold that down so that it's not a, you know, just a constant erosion problem, right? The one thing we have here, in having to masquerade this to get everything directed to that facility, is our, our ditches are, you know, they're graded sufficient to move the water, but we're not talking about, you know, you look around Morgantown as a whole and see what some of the development is on, you know, we're not talking about running dishes down 18, 20% grades. That exists a lot around here, but that's not what we're doing. So that helps with the velocities as well.
So if I could summarize your opinion, it is that this development is actually improving the management of stormwater in this area.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can I ask this one question? Going back to the impervious surfaces, you're, you know, the value engineering says that the numbers don't add up. They're, they're saying, they're, they're saying that their, the numbers are dramatically different by their calculations and your calculations. So what's right here and what's incorrect in their assumptions?
I don't have the detail of that, of that design. What I know is that there was a volume that was indicated based on whatever his calculation was for impervious. You know, we've run, we've run the quarter acre, and we've also run the impervious, the actual impervious for these, and we actually came up with a lower volume of water and looking at the specific imperviouses than we did with the original quarter-acre lot designation.
So they, they say that the total post-development impervious surfaces of 37,000 square feet was almost twice the designed and applied-for area of 19,244 square feet.
I don't know where that comes from. Honestly.
Well, I mean, they go on, for earlier in the paragraph to define what that was of, you know, each house lot and then the driveway or the roadways on there. So I'm just looking for some, you know, response by you from, on that state, on that paragraph, because...
I guess what my question is, the, the applied-for area of 19,244, I, I don't know what, where that comes from.
Well, if I could jump in, Dr. Petrus, let me ask you this. That impervious surface area is something you had to prove to MUB, and they had, they agreed to that or reviewed it and approved it? Is that...
The stormwater calculations as a whole, yeah.
I'm sorry?
The stormwater calculations as a whole, yes.
Well, those are fundamental to the calculations.
Yeah, that's a part of the greater package, yeah.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks. I think we probably ought to ask Ken Hacker some questions. Now, you want to call him up?
It's up to him, who wants to talk?
Good evening. Ken Hacker, Morgantown Utility Board.
Don't be so modest, Mr. Hacker. Mr. Hacker is the stormwater manager at Morgantown Utility Board and has been so for, what, Ken, 10 years or more?
Just about 10 years.
And, and I will say to embarrass you that I, I'm in this business and I understand that you are, MUB is without a doubt a leader in the state, if not the nation, with regard to stormwater management, and it's largely because of your efforts, so appreciate the work you do for us.
Appreciate you, thank you.
But you heard what the applicant said. I wanted, if you want to start, make any comments you want to make.
I believe the impervious square footage came off of our permit application number on the front. I believe those were filled out incorrectly. The, we look at the drainage area as a whole, so I've recreated their calculations using a different manner than they did, come up roughly with the same amount of runoff as they did. It's close enough where I can say that they did it correctly.
They being the applicant?
They being, yes, Ascend. The numbers that are on the permit application, we use as a billing number in the end, and those numbers are verified with the as-built once the project is complete. So those don't have to be right up front. It's basically a placeholder. We know the impervious area is obviously going to increase. We look at that stuff. Once the plans are approved, it's being built, nothing's changed, that gets verified whenever the as-built is submitted and then the accounts are set up as far as the billing goes at MUB. So those have the ability to change. They're not that critical up front. When you start getting a review of the plans all together and those are used, I can see where that can be confusing. But as a whole, with the calculations that were submitted and the report completed, that, that's what we look at, the entire drainage shed, so.
And you're comfortable with those numbers?
I was able to recreate those numbers and come within a very close margin of error that...
So Ken, on a place like, something like this, we have a quarter to third acre lots, and you know there's going to be fairly decent sized houses built there, probably up to the setbacks. Do you assume a certain amount of roofline, driveway, sidewalk as impervious surfaces? Do you just assume that, or what do you do?
So, so what we, what I use is the standard DOH drainage manual method to calculate runoff, and there's basically a table in there that we use to pull off the composite C value for urban residential areas, and it's based on the average slope of those areas. So that's where I pulled those. We did not look at the specific impervious areas because of the volume that's being provided for the stormwater management system as a whole. If they were going to do individual home systems for each house, then we would look at those and make sure that those are adequately matched or sized.
So you're saying that the impervious surface that we're talking about is sort of like a non-issue here? It's a matter of, we have one whole collection system, so the impervious surfaces on each lot don't really matter, is that what you're saying?
They, they do matter, but in, looking at it as a whole, they don't matter as much as if we were looking at one specific lot. So, you know, those C values, if you've looked at those tables, those range greatly. So you have to take it into account, well, we think this is going to be equivalent to an urban residential with small yards and average amount of yard space. So it's kind of just a judgment call whenever you're pulling those values out of those tables.
And in doing these calculations and in reviewing these plans, that's kind of what you have to do, isn't it? Because you can't look at, you can't wait for everybody to say, here's what my house is going to look like on this piece of property. You have to say, this is the standard manual that is used all across the state and several places throughout the country, and it gives us guidance.
Exactly, exactly.
There was a question raised in discussion and also in the letter from Value Engineering about Southview Street, the outlet and the capacity of the downstream system. Can you talk about that?
I'm not sure the method he used to calculate the, the volume in those.
I don't know if you can criticize that, just, just talk about whether it's adequate to handle the flows.
So the flows at that site currently go into that same system at a different location. What they're doing is reducing the peak flows on the 210 and 50-year storm, so.
So you heard the applicant say that he believes that he, that this project actually improves stormwater management in this part of the city. Would you agree with that?
With any project that's redeveloped and you are introducing stormwater management on that property in regards to stormwater, I, I would believe that it's an improvement. I mean, we have near 300 of these systems across our watershed, and I believe we've seen a great difference in issues.
Well, anybody that's lived here for 20 years would agree with that, absolutely.
Anybody?
I have a lot specific questions, so I don't know if you can bring up the, just the, okay, on here. So on lot six on there, which is the left lower lot, isn't that lot would naturally drain to the left from there rather than down to the, you know, spillway down there, right?
Lot, lot five, yeah.
So lot, lot six down there, it's, it's a natural way to drain for at least half of that lot. Wouldn't it be to the left rather than down, past the circle to the spillway? Because the, you know, the contours of the land are going kind of diagonally across this figure, right?
Yeah, I'm trying to see the proposed contours on that, but I, I see what you're saying, and I believe the, the proposed ditch extends all the way to the property line, possibly?
So the ditch comes up this 90 degrees down this property line?
No, I think it comes across.
It'll, it'll catch it on that backside and route it all the way around. The, the whole reason for the proposed grading on, on this site is to get the water away from those areas, right? And that's what I alluded to to begin with. Sure, we would love to put a road at grade, build the lots where they're at, and let the water go where it wants to go, but that, this is the point of doing that work, is to improve it and get the water away from those areas that have been problematic in the past.
Yeah, I, I understand. It's just, I'm just looking at these figures. It just looks to me like that lot is going to drain to the left rather than back to there, at least part of it would. And my understanding of MUB's rules on this is you can't do that with impervious surfaces draining onto someone else's lot.
Is there not like an earthen berm on that side of the site currently?
There is. You're catching on the top of the slope on lot five will be, will be bermed as such to catch it, to run it to that ditch, and then the majority of lot six will actually come back to the front and then run around the cul-de-sac and then come down that side between four and five.
So there's a berm to the left here that's really going to prevent water from...
Currently, that is how it lays. There, there's a berm that prevents this lot from draining onto the neighboring lot.
And six will, six will go to that back ditch and along the backside of the property and over to the...
Yeah, that's obvious. I was, oh, well, five was, but six wasn't to me, other than I couldn't see the berm on here, so.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to look at.
Two-foot contours, right? And it's, it's pretty standard, but there's, there's detail within that that it's hard to see on a two-foot contour map.
That vegetation line that's shown, sort of shown there in the green, is pretty close to where that berm is located.
So Ken, right now, there's a private stormwater management system on this property, right?
There is.
That connects with a MUB system.
Across private property.
Across private property, which kind of goes through the middle of that wall or underneath that wall, right?
Yeah, right, pretty much between lots three and two. If you follow that straight up, that is currently where the site exits the drainage.
And where that eventually goes, once it connects to MUB's system, is the same system that, off of Southview, that this is going to connect to.
Right.
You're just connecting to it in a different place. So you're, you're taking the, you're, you're taking the private storm system out of play, the, the existing one, and then just moving everything to the, to the southbound side of the property rather than running it back toward the back wall, is that right?
Exactly, exactly. The existing line that's in there was installed, who knows when, prior to the MUB stormwater utility being a thing, so in lieu of acquiring a right-of-way for that and upgrading that line to provide service, option number two was to provide a tap on Southview.
Okay, and there is already existing service on Southview where that pond will catch it, right?
There, there's an existing storm main, correct. It comes up, there's two inlets that set about midways up this project, up Southview towards Van Boris, that is the top of the system there.
Okay, and then you just tap in partway down that line?
Yeah, we would go to the lowermost point we could get to try to get as much elevation as possible.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I just want to circle back, and the succinct answer then with regard to the, the downstream capacity is, you believe it's adequate just because we're not changing the volume that's entering into the system?
It, it depends on what storm level you want to look at, exactly.
Yeah, it's a slippery thing, isn't it?
Yeah, yes, I mean, normal rain events, it's obvious, it's working currently, but you're, you're going to reach a certain point where you're going to have flooding issues, so.
Isn't that, I'm sorry, to put you on the spot, Ken, I mean, what do we say to the neighbors who are here concerned about this development worsening their flood, their stormwater problems?
We can enforce our regulations and standards on it, verify that it's built and constructed as planned or approved if it gets to that point, but...
And if it's built and constructed as approved, you believe it'll work appropriately?
Ah, it would, it will definitely capture and release at a controlled manner into the system on Southview, so I think people were talking about an assurance from flooding, and that's not something to, down the road, we, we can't make that statement.
We all know the weather's changing.
Yeah, I mean, we, we walked in and it was a torrential downpour.
100-year storm, same one we had last month.
Yeah.
And I guess the question is, when...
And I guess the question is, when you all review the design and as, design comes to you, the standard that they have to meet is it has to reduce, right?
Correct. It, it has to reduce by ten percent from pre to post, so, so pre-development to post-development. We, it has to meet a ten percent reduction on the peak flow for a two, ten and fifty year twenty-four hour event, which Ascent has provided.
It has to slow it too, right?
The, the velocity, it, it will achieve that, but that's not part of what is in the regulation.
So I, I guess by them following the regulations, the, the developer following the regulations and you all ensuring that they do follow the regulations, what happens is this is going to be, this is gonna reduce the, the flow off this property by ten percent, right?
Up to a fifty year event. And they're saying that it will handle a hundred year event, but that's not something we, we looked at. It's beyond the requirement, so.
And perhaps this is a better question for your colleague, but can you talk about the maintenance agreement and how we know this is going to work going forward? What does MUB do to make sure this is going to work?
Uh, well, so with, with the maintenance agreement, tho- those are recorded. Um, they maintain with the property forever.
Uh, you said this, well, I want to bring it, it's recorded, so it's in the chain of title.
Right, it's in the chain of title, so it, it will always be there. Any deed research will, will pull this up and they'll see that there is a, a stormwater management facility there. It's required to be maintained. It uh, gives MUB the ability to go and inspect at any time. Um, we have the requirement within city code. We have to do it once every five years, which is kind of a state mandate. But we require the owner to do an inspection once a year and then provide us the information from those inspections, so. But we could, we could be in there as often as we like.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Can you, Anthony, I'm sorry to ask this question, maybe it's unfair. In lay terms, what's the fifty year event? X inches over twenty-four hours?
Uh, yeah, so, let me pull it up here. I think it is. So we're, we're looking at four point eight inches of rain in twenty-four hours. It's a pretty substantial rain. Not quite anything like we saw last year, but it's still pretty. And again, that's based over a twenty-four hour period, pretty evenly. We know that's not exactly what we've been seeing lately, but it's a standard engineering parameter.
Thank you. Can I ask, what, what period of data do you know established those recurrence intervals? What period of data was used to establish those recurrence intervals, like the two, five, ten, fifty?
I, I, I can't answer that. That's, it's in every engineering manual.
So this is not like a West Virginia?
No, no.
In, in, like, can I?
Yeah.
In lay, uh, terms, that typically how we explain it is, is the chance of that storm happening again in the next fifty years, right? I mean, that's, that's the chance, same thing with a hundred, that's the chance of that storm happening again in the next. So uh, that gives you kind of a, it doesn't mean that it can't happen in back to back ways, but, but the, the percentages of that happening are pretty slim, right?
In a stationary climate.
Yeah, there's the rough right there. We're building infrastructure for a climate we don't live in anymore. That's the problem.
Well, I think that's also why MUB has a requirement for the fifty year, which is way above and beyond most communities.
It was only to a twenty-five year event until around two thousand thirteen. I don't know if you remember that.
Yeah, sure.
Um, it, it increased, we increased it to a fifty year event somewhere around twelve, thirteen, so.
And I don't know the DOH necessarily as a fifty year, do they?
Uh, no.
I think they do twenty-five on their major highways, ten on, on.
You may know more, you do more design work.
It's just on major roadways, interstates, they're looking at that. On your typical, uh, typical volumes, they're looking at ten years for most of the roads that we drive on every day.
Yep. Anybody else have anything for Mr. Hacker?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
Yeah, thank you for coming and giving us the information that we felt we were missing at our last meeting. It makes me way more comfortable moving forward.
And we did put you on the spot and you handled it well.
You're gonna introduce your silent partner back there?
Oh, this, this is Rich Rogers, our assistant GM, chief engineer.
Thank you for coming, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, I think that's it for the applicant, right? Did you guys have any other questions? I'll get, I'll get you in a minute. Okay, um. Does anyone here want to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Now's your turn. Now's your chance.
As soon as he sent you back to your seat, he's ready for you.
I didn't send her back. She could've stood there. I'd have gotten to her.
I, did you all get a, a copy of this? Okay.
Yes.
Uh, my name is Ruth Donaldson and unfortunately Alan died last year, so I'm here on my own. But I reside at thirteen hundred Heritage Place, which is down slope on this proposed subdivision development. On August fourth, the homeowners from Heritage Place and Colonial Drive met at my home for an hour to discuss this proposal subdivision. And in attendance were project engineer Devin Shrewberry, uh, MUB senior engineer, Ken Hacker, and development services director Ricky Jaeger. The neighborhood was so appreciative of the project engineer and other officials attending the meeting and answering questions about this proposed subdivision. Also, of course, through this value engineering, homeowners hired the professional engineer, Mr. John James of Value Engineering, to perform a technical review of the subdivision plans. And in his preliminary report, Mr. James determined that there are still many unaddressed problems regarding the drainage and the grading, such that a redesign of the project may be necessary. Therefore, until these deficiencies detailed in the technical report are adequately addressed, I am opposed to the petition for the preliminary plat approval. Thank you very much. Is that, supai?
This is John James. At some point, I would like to speak.
And, and, and Mr. James, I know you're there and I'm, I'm, I, I am gonna, actually, I knew you were there and I'm going to recognize you. I'm gonna try to get through any other of the residents that, that are opposed to it and then I will, I'll let you talk a little bit. How about that?
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so you're finished with me. No questions?
Well, we're not finished with you. You can stay here as long as you want. I don't have any questions.
No questions.
Well, I do have a question for you. Um, you, you said you met with the, the, everybody out there. Other than the, the things that Mr. James pointed out, did you, did you have any other concerns about the, the water runoff as it is now versus how it's gonna be?
Well, of course, in, in, in that context of the design, they feel, you know, the engineer do not feel they were sufficient. But, you know, uh, so I can just go by what he said.
Okay.
And which you've read.
Okay.
And I hope that suffices, does it?
Okay, that's, that's good. Thank you.
But they're concerned, but we neighbors, of course, are very concerned.
Sure, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Any other member of the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to the petition?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Eugenia Penya Jeftoev. I live in six eighty Colonial Drive, again, Downstreams. Um, I'm also an engineer and a hydrologist. And actually, I left engineering because I saw that a lot of things were just coefficients applied everywhere and sometimes they didn't fit. So I'm a soil scientist now, okay, in hydrology. So that's a little story. Um, concerns that I have, when we talk about peak flow, great, but that is one time event. The point is that how much water really we have successively? How many days? For example, the four point eight inches per twenty-four hours. What if we have three days where it rains three inches? So the point is the, is the volume that we're talking about. So I think the calculations are right. Like I said, a lot of coefficients, uh, they actually admitted that. Some, the people decide to use some type of coefficients, others, others. A lot of times it's what's more convenient, okay? And I'm not going to talk about what could be convenient or not. But anyway, so my, my, my issue is that I think the amount of volume of water that's going to be produced and put in the system that has been built in the fifties maybe, that did not count with this amount of impervious surface. Actually, are we going to improve it? I think that they talk about improving just the reducing the speed of the water to create this peak flow. But I don't think they're talking anything about the volume that's coming into the system, a system that's already outdated. I think the fact of maintenance, I have kind of, I have friends in other states and I ask about that. And many times what happens is that the project manager needs to establish with MUB, in this case, a maintenance plan for good, in which they need to come every year and check the lines and clean the lines so they can actually manage the big flow that's coming. I don't know if you did, did see just two days ago the rain that we had. I think you could see the amount of stormwater that was produced. And all these are constructions that actually followed the, the requirements that we have. I think the requirements that we have in MUB, and I was talking very kindly with, with Mr. Hacker. I mean, some of them, they need to be revised. Excellent question that you asked. The weather's not the same. Excellent point. The weather that we are living now is not the same at all. That's why I said may, maybe not four point eight in twenty-four hours. But in three days, you can have six. And the point is that volume. So we're talking about peak flow. A lot of times the peak flow you come, see, come and go. But what about the base flow that stays? The amount of water that the system is actually managing. So I have suffered several floods in my basement and that has been even before a lot of new constructions is there. I must say that MUB had did a very good job. They started to do maintenance, but they don't have the resources. And uh, I don't know, I know that I suffered because there was no enough maintenance, no resources to do that. I think in this case, um, I don't know what else they can do. The ca- the calculations are fine. I mean, I don't have them all, but I was looking at whatever I have and I don't see any problem with that. See problems with the type of weather recurrence that we're using. I have problems with the coefficients that many times I used to do the calculations. I think that the only thing that can be done in this case, if this is approved, is maintenance or a, some update on the storm remove, uh, the storm system, but that's all around Morganton. I don't think I need to tell you what we always saw in the news several days ago. And guess what? That is related with a new pattern of weather that we have and is related with old ordinances and old things that we are just living with. Maintenance is going to be here. If this is approved, maintenance is going to be the key. And uh, I think MUB is not the one who needs to have all the, hold it back, like we would say, on, on this alone. I mean, I think there must be some type of, 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 I don't know, agreement. So that would be actually help the system that's already under calculated, that means the existing stormwater system, kind of work. I don't think anything else. That's just an idea. And by the way, it's amazing to be here, so, and I thank you for the opportunity. And I hope, well, I don't have all the calculations, but I, if I can be of any help, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the petition? Okay, I, Mr. James, I guess we'll get to you now. Uh, no other citizens are standing up, so.
Okay, um, uh-oh. I'm gonna turn my camera around. I know you don't wanna see me anyway. And uh, but let me, let me go back up to the plans. And we'll talk from there a little bit. And first of all, I'm not speaking in opposition. I'm just speaking as an independent reviewer. But when I reviewed this, I did see some, whoops, problems. Now, wait a minute, I got messed up there. Let me see if I can. I don't know what happened. I was able to do it a minute ago.
Technology.
Here we go. All right, I've gotta turn it around. Here's the plans, here's the, here's the one real problem I have. Cause their design discharge over here is, I don't know, eight, eight or twelve CFS. That's the amount of water that they calculate has to leave the system. That has to leave the system in order for this project to work on a fifty year return period. My understanding from MUB that I learned today was that the pipe, the culvert in Southview Street is only a twelve inch culvert. At the head that that, either eight or twelve CFS, we'll go look at that in a minute. At the head that that goes out there, there's only three feet of head between the water in the pond and the inverted of the pipe out there. It's a very simple calculation. I'll show you, uh, this is the, and I hope you can see this. This is, this is a chart, simple chart of the WB DOH drainage manual for pipe culvert. It's within the control, it's HDPE, but it's the same with the, whatever type pipe you've got. For a twelve inch pipe, in a three to one, a, a three head water over diameter, and since it's a twelve inch pipe, three feet would be a three to one head water over D. You get a, you get a capacity of that twelve inch pipe of only six CFS. An eight CFS or twelve CFS, whatever their peak discharge that they're showing, will not go into a pipe that's only capable of carrying six CFS at that head. And if you increase the head, it over tops the pipe. And that's assuming that there's no other water flowing during this fifty year storm in any of the system in Southview. And that's, and that's just, that's just plain not possible. So basically, that's saying, and, and the same thing happens with the twenty-five, it doesn't work on a twenty-five. It simply will not work a- as planned. If that's a twelve inch pipe, and I assume it is because I was told that I can, we've got a fifteen inch pipe going into a ten inch pipe, or into a twelve inch pipe with three foot of head on it, that's the design head, and it simply will not go. The other, now, as far as the, as far as the calculations and the impervious surface, the impervious surface that they came up with was nineteen twenty-four, which is right out of their application. The road itself was thirteen thousand something. Only leaves six thousand or six hundred square foot per lot for impervious surface. For the house, the driveway and sidewalks and, we, they're not gonna build six hundred square foot houses on that. Now, it may be because their runoff curve number, they used, I think eighty-two or eighty-four. That probably is correct even if you use my impervious surface. But still yet, it should, I just feel like it should, that should be checked. That, that, that calculation is probably correct. The runoff curve number that they used is, probably reflects my calculated impervious rather than theirs. But, but their, 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 uh, application states only nineteen thousand. The other big issue I have is the soils, the soils in this area. And I can't speak for up at Van Bors Road, but down here in, in Heritage Place area, these soils are cruston or lake deposit soils. They're very, very susceptible to sliding. And they probably extend up to this elevation. I don't know, cause I don't have any data on that. However, if you make this fourteen feet, twelve feet, ten feet, two to one cut up here right below Van Bors Road, um, those soils are very prone to sliding and there's a good chance that Van Bors Road would slip out at that point. I would not design a, I would not design a, a, a slope like that below that road without some sort of investigation. some sort of investigation. The, the other thing is, is they're showing their ditch crossing down over this two-to-ones slope, this is a two-to-one fill slope down here, this is a two-to-one, this is a two-to-one cut slope up here, I hope you can see my mouse. This is a two-to-one fill slope, they're showing this ditch line crossing, just crossing diagonally across that two-to-one slope, well, you've got to have better details to that to make any sense out of things. And as I said, I, I really think some improvements, I think that they really had the right idea to start with, to leave lots the way they are with very minimal grading, probably utilize this storm source system, it might be a little bit too low, and you could utilize, the way the design could be is you could catch the water in the existing culverts, the, without any grading of the site except with minimal grading, grade out for a, grade out for a pond here which could be much larger, and you would have to get, you'd have to set up a flooding easement on these lots one and two, but that's not a big deal because you'd be, it wouldn't flood very often. You would actually set up where you drain, drain the bottom of the pond, you would drain the bottom of the pond into this existing through maybe only a six-inch pipe, the existing pipe that goes, that goes, that's in there now is an eight inch, so if you cut this back to a six inch, you wouldn't overwhelm this pipe, and then you could still do the same thing to, to get a little, to, to get some more of your overflow up here. I think you could make the cut, make the drainage work by doing that, but the way it is now, it absolutely will not work. And if you want to see, this is their calculations. I'm not sure exactly which is which here. This is reservoir fifty-year pro, uh, frequency with most development, but the peak discharge of eight CFS, and eight CFS won't go into the pipe that's only capable of carrying six CFS. It, and that's assuming there's no other flow in, in Southview, and that just simply won't work, and it needs to be designed so it does work. Now, like I said, I'm not opposed to the site, and I think that finding this out now is a blessing in disguise so that you can, so that you can study this and find out what, really what the capabilities are and what you do need to do here. Right now, I suspect if you had a big flood, it might even backflow in, in here, and flood this area worse, uh, behind the wall, so I'm, I'm really relatively concerned about, about the, the, the system as designed, because of the pipe in Southview and the flow, in the flows to in Southview.
Yeah, John, I got a quick question for you. You said a fifteen-inch pipe going into a twelve-inch pipe, are you talking about the fifteen-inch pipe, which is what comes out of the pond and then will connect with Southview, which is a twelve-inch pipe, is that, is that where you meant?
That's correct.
Okay.
Their design now has a, a relatively flat slope, one percent fifteen-inch pipe that goes from, uh, let me make sure, yeah, my mouse is showing up. It goes from the riser, which is here, over to Southview Street here, but that's a fifteen-inch pipe, but the pipe that goes along downstream in Southview is only a twelve-inch pipe, it's at a greater slope, but it's controlled by entrance control, and it's only capable of carrying, under those conditions, six CFS of water, and they're showing eight CFS that they're discharging to that. Well, if it only carries six, the other two starts backing up and building the pond up, and then, and I don't know, I haven't had time to do calculations to know what would happen at that point, but I just, I do know that it won't work.
Do you know what the capacity of the pond is?
What the, what the, um, storage capacity?
Yes.
Yes, I do, I do know, but I haven't had a chance to route any floods to know what would happen. I mean, I, I've got, I've got, I've got the, uh, design calculations that, that shows, that shows that, and, and, um, and I assume that they're correct. I don't, I, I can't quote what the numbers are off the top of my head.
Okay.
But it doesn't, and, and it may be that because that's based on a, that's based on a twenty, the design is based on backing up the water to about elevation ten-twenty in the pond, in the top of the pond, it is shown as ten-twenty-one, although it really is awfully narrow, it, it shows a little peak right here, which is a dangerous way to build a pond, but that's neither here nor there, it's a minor detail. Whether it would back up another foot or not, I can't tell you that right now, but it needs to be, it needs to be looked at, but at the same time, like I say, that's based on zero flow in the Southview system. My guess is during a fifty-year flood, the Southview system's going to be flowing full anyway. Now, there is a difference in the time of concentration, but it's not going to be that much different. And, and one of the problems with reducing the peak flow is that you, that you, that peak flow is carried out over a longer time. So my guess is that Southview at that point is probably going to be, uh, completely at capacity to where it won't accept anything from the pond. So, so the, the, the way that this, the proper way to design this is to go back and study the whole system, do it, do a study and find out what the discharges in Southview are, uh, and with the, your hydrographs and your peak flows and your time of peaks and all that, and compare it to this and see what will happen, but, but right now, it will not work. It just simply won't work because you can't discharge eight CFS into a pipe that's only capable of carrying six CFS, CFS at that, at that elevation.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. James? Okay, thank you, Mr. James.
Like I say, I think, I think, I know that, I know that probably people were unhappy with my, with me supposedly in opposition, I'm not in opposition, I think it would make a wonderful project, but I really think this is a blessing in disguise to, to, to determine this and to, and to get this out there. And I also think that it's a blessing in disguise that you need to look about the potential stability of these slopes on the eastern part of the site, the two-to-one sto, slopes, two-to-one slopes are, I mean, that's standard slopes that are used, but they're awfully steep, you cannot maintain them with a mower, you have to weed eat them, it's even difficult to weed eat them, and anything could be done to, I think that if nothing else, those slopes ought to be cut. I mean, there would be nothing wrong with cutting those to four-to-one, you still have plenty of room for the houses, and then you could mow these, these back here, and it'd be much more stable. A lot of times, those equestrian soils, they will slide it even a six-to-one slope, I've seen them slide it even a six-to-one slope. So, that two-to-one slope, if they are, now, they may be, it may be that those are good soils back up, back up there, but if they are the equestrian soils, I think that, I think you need to reconsider your slopes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the petition? Okay, I got a couple of quick questions for either the engineer or Mr. Hacker, based on what Mr. James said, I think you probably do too, right?
Well, yeah, he said it wouldn't work, I'd like to hear Mr. Hacker's opinion of what that means and, and whether he feels the same way. Could you step up the microphone, Ken? I, I, I hate to set you up as dueling engineers, I mean, we all know what that's about, okay, but, but the conclusion he's drawing is that, that downstream connection will not work.
I have not got to look at his calculations or anything, I would rather sit down with Mr. James.
Anything in your calculations indicates that it won't work?
I would say it's, it's, we're at the borderline of the capacity for that pipe, based on my calculation.
This is a problem, this is a problem all over the city, right?
Exactly.
Yeah.
We're dealing with a system that's a hundred years old.
Built for a different climate.
Different climate, different times, so, you know, I can't dispute what he's saying, but I would like to sit down and go over the numbers. I don't think this is the place to do that.
Well, and, and I guess.
It's a fair answer.
Yeah, it is, and, and I guess what we're saying is, is the design meets the MUP standards for the output by decreasing it ten percent for, what, two, ten, and fifty here, right?
Right.
And unless, until somebody tears out the entire system and, and builds us a new one, we've got to live with what we got, right?
Exactly.
And all we can do is try to reduce as best we can.
Which I believe was the intent of those reductions in the flow, to lessen that curve and spread the flow out over a longer period of time.
Okay. Another quick question for you, one of the people who spoke in opposition, and I can't remember her name, I'm sorry, um, the engineer slash hydrologist. When she talks about the, you know, we don't get the fifty-year storm, the four-point-eight inches over the, over the twenty-four hour period, but we get three, three, and three, where you get nine inches, is that, is this system designed to handle something like that too?
Um, that's not, the calculations that we've looked at, typically those systems are designed to de-water within forty-eight hours, so if you get back-to-back three-inch rain events, day to day to day, it doesn't have a chance to de-water fully, so.
But nothing would, would it?
I wouldn't think, especially not in this state with the soils that we have.
I might just one quick question. So, the, the number that Mr. James threw out was potentially six CFS as being the limit into the pipe, what, without, you know, setting it up as a debate, I'm just curious what number, in, just in your calculations, you ended up with?
I came up with seven.
Okay.
They have a discharge of eight, we're all right there in the same area, so I would not say that he's incorrect, but again, I would like to sit down.
Sure, thanks.
See what methodology he used, I'm not sure where he's getting his information as far as, we look at the slope of the pipe and, and all that, I understand the chart that he was using, which, we use the DOH Drainage Manual as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
And I just wanted, when you say meet MUP standards, we're talking about city law, this is, these are all ordinances here we're talking about.
Right, right.
And that's all you can make them design to, right?
That's, that's what we can enforce.
Okay.
And they've met those standards?
Yes.
But doesn't, doesn't it still have to meet that, that output standard in order to fulfill the compliance of holding ten percent more water? I mean, if it, it can't push the water off the site, then it can't fulfill that.
There, there's some other parts of the system that we would need to take into account in that conversation that, again, I'm not sure, tonight without a, a map and going down in.
I'm not pushing it, but I'm just saying that if the output premise isn't valid, then it can't hold what it says it can hold, because it's.
But, but the, the point I think Mr. Hacker's making is we don't, you don't regulate to that, is that right?
That's not, exactly.
It's not in the ordinance.
It's a ten percent reduction, so, it's what we hold all developments to, so.
Yeah, and, and, but what I'm saying is that if, that ten percent reduction is predicated on the water coming out of that, out of that facility and the manner in which you're calculating it to come out.
Right.
Right, and so that's the, the calculation is different between all three of them, there are six, seven, eight, right, so.
I guess just for our edification, what's the difference between the six, seven, and eight? You say CFS, what, tell us what's CFS.
Uh, CFS is cubic feet per second, um, it's stormwater flows, that's your common unit of measure, um, somewhere around four-hundred-and-eighty gallons a minute, but it's, it's a lot of water when you start talking about stormwater runoff flows, so. So you, you picture one cubic foot block that moves by.
Every second.
Per second.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, pardon?
Can I ask a question, or are you too late for that?
Well, it's kind of too late, but go ahead.
Sorry. Jacob Lambert, I live thirteen-twelve Heritage Place, right behind the Brookport Development. Um, so my thought is actually directly past where this water-holding pond would be, and so my question is, if the calculation is off by one to two cubic feet per second, four-hundred-and-eighty gallons a minute, over the course of a day, how long would it take for that pond to overflow? Is that something that we normally calculate? Because if that pond does overflow, it's going right into my basement. And so is that something that matters in the regulations? Do we take that into account? Those are, I guess I want to know, I just want to make sure that I'm not going to go from not having a flooded basement to having a flooded basement based on this development being put in place.
Okay. Anybody?
Thank you.
So it's a question about pond design, right?
Sure, so, so one, so one thing to keep in mind with, and we could, again, we could debate about what that ultimate number is all, all day, but also that's why in a pond design, you provide a free board above and beyond what that water surface elevation is per the storm and the calculation that you put into it, right? So that's why you have at least a foot of free board over that fifty-year, so that if, if something does happen, it starts to back up, you have added capacity beyond that. And while that's going on, that is continuing to bleed off, right? So you are pulling that down, it's, it's got added protection, added volume above, and it's pulling down as it goes. Now, the other thing as a, as a, as a backup, and I don't even, I hate to even say this because, because we didn't design this needing this as a backup, but that existing private line is, is still there, right? We weren't allowed to get into it, and we're trying to come away from those, but it's still there, the storm grate's there, and we've designed and graded the site around that to leave that in its natural state. So if, in the event that something blocked up the outlet, something happened and that water came back out of the pond, it still has an alternate route through piping to go. So if, even if that were a small amount, right, um, that provides as a stopgap on the backend, and we're, again, we didn't, we didn't rely on that in the design, but it is there, so it's noteworthy, I believe.
Okay.
So the direct answer to the gentleman's question is that the pond is designed not to overflow, and it would take some extraordinary event to overflow that pond the way he's described.
Yeah, and that water, that, although the water gets to that point nearly for that site now, if a small portion of that went there, it'd be a lot more manageable through that, through that piping.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any more questions for anyone?
If I might just address and point a couple things out.
Mr. James, we're actually done with that part of it now, I'm sorry. I haven't had dinner yet, so. I'm, I'm going to get us out of here at some point. We're going to do, we're going to do staff recommendations, please.
Staff recommendations are just approval for case number MJF twenty-two, statute one, granted and subject to the following conditions listed in packet, and number one
Okay, anybody have any questions for the planner? Okay, any discussion?
Chair ready for motion?
I am ready for motion.
Move for approval, subject to staff conditions one through ten.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Hesitant.
Okay. I'm going to do this, I think.
We can have discussion on the motion, or?
Do you want to have a discussion on the motion? That's fine with me. Correct.
First of all, I wanna thank MUB for coming and talking with us and, uh, presenting, uh, their perspective on this. And the, the bottom line for me with regard to these stormwater concerns is that we can only regulate to the ordinance. We can't make up different standards, we can't make up standards we think are more appropriate. I mean, we can all agree that stormwater management is the great twenty-first century challenge for Morgantown, um, and for every town of, of this age and, uh, type. But we can only regulate to what the ordinance says. We're not the review panel for MUB's stormwater program. We're not competent to do that, we're not authorized to do that. If, if a, if a citizen felt that MUB issued a permit, uh, inappropriately, we're not the, we're not the panel that hears that complaint, so.
Your time's up. Sorry about that.
Uh, I share, I share all the concerns that have been discussed here tonight and, and more. But, um, we can only act on what we're authorized to do, and what we're authorized to do is review the application, which includes an approved stormwater permit, and that's why I make the motion to approve the application, subject to staff conditions.
And, and, and Mr. Stranko, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda gonna second what you have said. I know there are a lot of concerns by the residents' inheritance place, and, and I understand them, and, uh, I, I know the history. You have a piece of property here that, that can be developed. From what I'm seeing, the standards to develop it have been met. Uh, there is a stormwater permit process that has to be done. That has to follow the ordinances of the city of Morgantown, which are, I guess, controlled by MUB. MUB has reviewed it, determined that the standards are met, which means the ordinances are met. I don't know that we necessarily have a choice. Will it do what it's supposed to do? We don't know. But I don't think it's our role to say, just because we don't know, yes, it met the standards, but we don't know, I don't think it's our role to second-guess the ordinances, and I don't think it's our role to second-guess, um, the process. I think what we've done here is we've, by our reviewing this, we have made the parties go back and look at it, study it a little bit more. Uh, we've had the parties meet, everybody talk about what their concerns are. And I think we've gotten, we've managed to get a, a dialogue going between the parties that's helpful. And I think we've managed to get some processes as far as how this is going to be managed and maintained in the future in place. So I think we've done about all we can do.
And of course, the uncertainty, the underlying uncertainty in all of this is the climate. And the, the magnitude, the velocity of the storms that we're, we're suffering. And there are no guarantees, and, and I think, uh, to, to stop development because we've got a climate that's changing, um, and perhaps downstream infrastructure that doesn't match the changing climate, i- is not, number one, not appropriate, and number two, not our role.
My concern has always been with this particular project, the capacity of the system already in place on Southview, and tonight did not help to alleviate that concern at all, but I also recognize that that is a MUB problem and not this developer's issue to solve. So as long as they are meeting what MUB says they have to meet, we, we have to take them at their word for that. And I do hope that Mr. Hacker will sit down with Mr. James and, should it be determined that that would potentially cause an issue with an overflow of the pond or something like that, that the developer would be willing to stop and relook at the, the plan and see if any changes could potentially be made to alleviate those concerns.
I think to the deputy mayor's point, it's important, uh, interesting to know this, I think. In our water and storm, in our potable water and sanitary sewer rules, a developer's got to extend to the main of nearest capacity. So if this was a sewer extension, and we felt that that connection, MUB felt that connection was inadequate, the developer would be responsible for going all the way to the next largest main. But the stormwater rules aren't like that. There's no mechanism that we can require this applicant to say, you've gotta fix Southview. That's, that's unfortunately not the game here. Uh, I wish it was. It would make our retooling of the stormwater system much easier, much less expensive for our constituents, but that's not the rule. So, uh, that's what, to, to your point, Daniel, that's what we're doing.
Any other discussion?
Call the question?
Okay. Call in favor, raise your hand. You know us. Next item is TX twenty-two dash zero-one, Protect Morgantown Firearms Sales Establishment.
Just have one second to reset here.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. James. We're ending the call now.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And what I'll do is we can wait a couple minutes for the people to clear out, so we don't have the.
I think that must show up in the.
Yeah, yeah, that was helpful. Okay, looks like we're ready.
There we are.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, everybody. Uh, this is case number TX twenty-two dash zero-one. Uh, the petitioner has submitted an application to amend, uh, text in the zoning ordinance by proposing a new land use classification and amendment to the city's permitted land use table. As you can see here on the screen and in your packet, the, the new definition for firearms sales establishment reads, "An establishment engaged in the sale, manufacture for sale, or repair of firearms, ammunition, and ammunition components, and hunting or shooting equipment." The proposed amendment to Article thirteen thirty-five, uh, thirteen thirty-one oh five is that this, the, this, that these establishments would be, uh, be permitted by conditional use in the B-one and B-two district and by right in the B-five district. Uh, the proposal is consistent with the cities of Huntington and Charleston in terms of their definition and application, uh, to the, uh, related districts. And I included a zoning map, uh, in your packet for reference. And that will conclude my report.
First of all, does anybody have any questions for the planner about the report?
Well, I'd just say we don't use Charleston and Huntington as standard too, more than that. Thank you.
I'm gonna leave that there.
You know I'm right.
Yeah, I know you're right. And that's gonna be in the paper, just, just saying that.
I bet it won't do that, though.
Okay, is the petitioner here? Anyone wanna speak about it?
Yes, hi, uh, thank you, commissioners. Uh, my name is Shay Straight. I live at twelve-twenty-three Peacock Lane in Fairmont. I'm a former resident of Morgantown and Westover, and do dearly miss this city very much, by the way. And I am here, um, as the agent representing Protect Morgantown with their request to do a text amendment for the zoning code. I am a professional planner, and I'm wearing many other literal and figurative hats as well. And one of the things that I like to do is kick the tires on zoning codes. I'm a firm believer in that, that sometimes we maybe don't look at them often enough and look at the things within them. Um, and maybe every once in a while, uh, communities need to get together and do things like this and evaluate, what we're prioritizing or what we're focusing on, and maybe how we could do things just a little bit better, one little piece at a time. So I have read, um, the report, uh, that was put together by, uh, Mr. Jaeger here. And, uh, I have to say that Protect Morgantown is in favor of the alternatives proposed by the staff for the city of Morgantown. Um, our original request, uh, was modest, uh, we believe that to be in line. And in further reviewing the proposal, put together the alternatives, uh, for Mr. Jaeger, we believe those would still meet, uh, the intent of Protect Morgantown of defining firearms sales establishment as their own separate use, away from sporting goods stores and retail establishments. And considering how those land uses interact with adjacent land uses, that's one of the priorities that we're looking at. Do we want, um, is this a land use that we wish to have adjacent to, um, homes or can, small corner stores, churches, and school areas and so forth? And so that's, um, one of the things that we had sought to hopefully adjust. And that's where the second alternative, with the additional use standards, we believe is in line with the intent that we were looking to accomplish. As well, I looked at the zoning map of if the alternatives were, um, approved and, uh, accepted from the commissioners here, then, uh, there looks like there's some really great areas for these businesses to continue to operate within the community. We got Don Knotts Boulevard, the Saberton area, uh, a short stretch in Greenmont, a small part of Sunnyside, uh, over on Beachhurst, uh, near where the Seneca Center is and so forth. So it looks like there are still several key commercial locations that are high-profile and very desirable areas that would be very suitable for these businesses to continue to operate in. So we do not believe that this would inhibit, um, those land uses either. Uh, but would, um, prove to protect those adjacent land uses, uh, we believe that are more sensitive and could be impacted by these. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer, um, and, uh, I won't take any to offense that I did write the Huntington zoning code. So it's quite all right.
Talked it all your life, buddy.
I, I do have, I, I do have a quick question for you. And you may have said, I just wanna make sure that it's clear and on the record. You said you, you liked staff's alternatives, there's an alternative one, an alternative two. Is there one you like better?
I believe alternative two meets the intent that Protect, Protect Morgantown had better than our, our original request put forth.
Okay.
Um, I believe staff has done a, a very thorough review and has brought forth additional language that would help to, um, put in place the, uh, reasonable regulations, and something very modest.
Okay, so you're okay with both alternatives, but two would be your choice?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes.
So, uh, first of all, your representation precedes you. Thank you for joining us tonight. It's a pleasure, a pleasure to meet you. So the code gives us some parameters which, uh, under which we regulate. There are seven criteria that Mr. Jaeger kindly shared with us in the staff report. So are we talking here about a change to promote general public welfare, health, safety, et cetera, et cetera? Or are we talking about promoting the orderly development of land? How, how should we think about, um, our, our charge from the legislature?
I believe, um, what we were looking at here are, your purpose section is thirteen twenty-seven point zero-two, um, the city of Morgantown. And with there, there are several sections, and I believe B, to promote the public health, health, safety, welfare, morals, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the city. Um, C, which is to protect the character and stability of residential areas, it does include the other, uh, general land use descriptions as well. And then G, encourage compatible, um, compatibility between different land uses, right? Um, and so this is to make sure that those three purposes of your all's code are, um, hopefully observed in this request.
Excellent answer, thank you.
So, let, just to follow up on that, now, I'm trying to decipher what is the reason to exclude the general business district? And is it because it's potentially mixed-use, there's residential areas within that as far as apartments, et cetera? Or do you have another reason why it shouldn't be located in the, in the general business district?
I have a personal view on that and a professional view on that.
Right, and, and I get it, and, I mean, it's, you know, but, but let's say here versus, you know, another part of the city. If it's going to be there, tell me why it shouldn't be in the general business district.
I think it would be unjust to not observe, um, what are the conditions of the downtown district, the general business district in Morgantown. Um, we, I think you all are unique, in which you shouldn't always base everything off of what the other towns are doing. You all do have a unique commercial culture here in your downtown area, and that does include a significant number of things that are geared towards, um, college students and adults and so forth, including bars, and a lot of alcohol consumption, sales. There's also a lot of other land uses that are common here, uh, public facilities, schools, churches, and so forth that are all strung through Spruce Street and High Street and everywhere else in the downtown. And I think the Wharf District is part of B-four as well, is it not? Yeah, so we have a lot of those land uses there. And so there is some concern about placing this type of land use adjacent to those and the impact that it could have on those other uses, or the percent. Another thing that I like to take and consider when I do planning work is almost the subconscious impact that it has on people. Do people feel safer going to, um, a place where you may imbibe an alcohol if adjacent to that is a land use of this type? And do they feel comfortable with that? Is that maybe the best thing to have next to somebody who may not be making the best decisions? Uh, we're talking about young adults with not even fully developed frontal lobes, who are here to have a wonderful, hopefully wonderful time here in the city of Morgantown. And so maybe those things should be separated from one another. And so that may be a reason to exclude it from the B-four district within your community.
Any other question? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Um, any member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the petition?
Good evening. My name is Jody Hollingsed. I'm the organizer of Protect Morgantown. We've proposed this text amendment for two main reasons, most of which Shay has already so graciously and much more, much more equipped to describe than me. But I'm here to represent Protect Morgantown. First and foremost, the safety of our community members. Evidence shows that where there are more firearms available, where gun stores open, gun deaths increase close to those stores that are opening. Downtown Morgantown is no place for another gun store for many of the reasons, again, Shay has already described. In the city's most recent comprehensive plan, Morgantown twenty-thirty-three, I was disappointed to see that public safety was not a focus. And now is our chance to course correct. Second is to facilitate the future we wanna see in Morgantown. We have an opportunity to create a welcoming city that serves its community members in meaningful ways. Grocery stores, hardware stores, comfortable gathering spaces. A new gun store downtown sets a dangerous and undesirable precedent for the downtown area. We appreciate your consideration of this text amendment in an effort to adopt reasonable permitted use regulations to better protect the community while also protecting the rights of firearm businesses to operate and contribute positively to the city. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the text amendment?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Hunt, two-twenty Front Street, Morgantown. Um, I'm a resident of Morgantown, and I'm in support of the proposed restrictions on zoning as to where our gun stores are allowed to be. It is a proactive move to keep the community safe and shows that as a city, we are always thinking of the future and what kind of city we would like to be. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Oh, sorry, that was for it. Sorry, anyone who'd like to speak, you know, anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the petition?
You need to eat before you come to me.
Need to get some chocolate up there or something, right?
If you had chocolate, I'd stay here all night. Do staff recommendations, please.
All right. Um, so after review, staff did not provide a recommendation on the applicant's petition to amend the city's zoning ordinance as presented, provided two alternatives for the commission's consideration, both which would, uh, uh, regulate the establishments engaged in the sale of guns, ammunition, related accessories. Uh, alternative number one, I'll just read the firearms sales definition would mean an establishment engaged in the sale, manufacture, for sale, lease, or repair of firearms, ammunition, and ammunition components and related accessories, and remove the terminology hunting or shooting equipment, and then add the following sentence. If an establishment is a firearms sales establishment as defined here, it should not be deemed to constitute any other permitted use under the zoning code. And then to further clarify that, there are definitions in the state code firearm and antique firearms that are listed, and I put, uh, I apologize, it got cut off in your packet as well as on my slide, but in your orange packet, this is communications we received uh, regarding this particular application, and you can see the full definition of antique firearms listed there. Items A, B, and C would be included in that definition, uh, in the city's ordinance. There's also a communication, uh, from Mr. Whitmore regarding. There's also a communication, uh, from Mr. Whitmore regarding the text amendment as well, inside your packet. Um, and then, uh, looking at the matter further and looking at the purpose of the districts, uh, the one alternative would be to keep B-two as a conditional use, B-five as a permitted use, but remove B-one, the neighborhood business district, uh, uh, from allowing this use in, in those areas. Uh, alternative two, uh, keeps the same definitions for firearm sales and the subsequent definitions proposed in state code, uh, but would also provide supplemental regulations around, uh, the firearm sales establishments regarding s- sensitive uses, and that's what, uh, the applicant referred to, uh, Mr. Straight referred to in your packet, is an analysis of permitted, uh, where firearm sales establishments would be permitted in the city if the supplemental regulations, uh, were effective. And that will conclude staff's report.
Okay, so we get to choose between one and two and recommend either of those-
Or the applicant's proposal.
Or the applicant's proposal and recommend.
So the intent wasn't-
Or something else.
Or something else, or-
Yeah.
Or none of the above.
Staff's intent was not to endorse any-
Okay.
Any alternative, just to provide them for consideration.
Okay.
Why are you looking at me?
Cause you like to talk.
I like to talk, and I feel bad about being the guy yakking all the time.
I'll start, how about that?
Dr. Petros is agreeing to start, thank you, sir.
Um, and I think this was brought up in, in Mr. Whitmore's comments, why not industrial then, in your suggestions?
Looking at the purpose of those districts, it's not, it's not a retail district, and if, if staff's looking at it from right now, which is our only alternative, is to look at as a retail sales or a sporting goods store, those establishments are not permitted in industrial district now. That's why industrial district was not proposed. And if we look, um, I, on, on the zoning map, there's only really three, three major zones, obviously the airport, you have down along, uh, uh, the rail trail, and then you have a section actually in the Brockaway area, where it actually is zoned industrial, and that was another consideration as well.
Well, you know, I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we can remind ourselves too often that when we're convened here, we're the government, and, yeah, we're not launching tanks or, or whatever, but we're telling people what they can and can't do with our property, and I think when we do that, we've got to be really careful about what we're doing and how we do it. Um, you know, happily, our, our process is solid, how we do it is fair, I think, and I, and I appreciate your participation, and, uh, hopefully your continued participation in this discussion, because I'm not ready to, to vote on this. I, I, I would like to, uh, we have work to do here to figure out i- if this is the best thing for Morgantown and for the property owners, and for the investors that are considering, uh, investing in our city, um, which is so important to us. Um, so before I'm ready to vote to intervene in somebody's life like this, I, I think we need to, a, a couple of questions I'd like to get answered. Um, uh, the applicant talked about the relationship between, uh, gun stores and gun deaths, um, that is the, the, uh, distance, I suppose, is, is what, uh, the hypothesis she presented. So, and I guess in a more general sense, how would our act here promote the general public welfare, health, and safety? I, I'd like to understand, um, what we're accomplishing with, uh, with creating a specific regulation for a specific otherwise lawful bu- uh, business. Second, I'd like to get a legal opinion, uh, from the city attorney on, on the Second Amendment issues. These are hot button issues that, that are, I mean, if you're familiar with the legislature, you know there's, there's dozens of people with black t-shirts and rifles on the front, all lobbying about this stuff. So we need to make sure we're solid, on solid ground with regard to the law as well. And so those are my two major concerns. I think they also, uh, to, to drill down a little further, make sure we understand how we're defining, if we're going to define this as a discreet, uh, regulated activity, how we define it. I think you've done an excellent job, uh, presenting a definition, I'd like for us to spend some, a little more time on that as well, for those three reasons and perhaps more, um, but fundamentally, because this is important, I think we, we should table it and ask staff to do a little more work on this before we vote. So that, I, I'll make that in form of a motion.
We have a motion to table, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's a second. Oh, in favor? That looks unanimous.
So hopefully you'll come back, and we can continue to talk.
I probably won't have dinner by then either.
Our, our staff support isn't as good as paramized, but we're all right.
Just wait till I start getting grouchy.
This isn't grouchy.
No, this is, this, trust me, this is not grouchy. Trust my family, this is not-
Yeah, I've seen it before.
Yeah. Um, other business, committee reports. Okay, anything on staff comment?
Uh, just, you received an, um, a communication from staff that, uh, Mr. Hammond has resigned, we appreciate his service, but we are in service or need of a, a vice president.
He'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, sir. And, um, that'll be it?
Oh, I do want to, uh, recognize Charlie. Uh, he was a member last time, but couldn't come because of certain issues, but we won't get into that. Um, but we welcome you and, uh, hope you enjoy your time here.
See how much fun this is, Charlie?
What, what, what else is there to do on Thursday night?
That's right.
Come on, man.
We got anything else for the good of the commission?
Move to adjourn?
All right, go home and eat.